Good evening, everyone. It's January 2nd, 2025. This is a meeting of the Sherborn Zoning Board of Appeals, a continuation of the public hearing on the application of Phoenix Partners Brush Hill LLC for a comprehensive permit pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 40B. Is the applicant team here? I think I know the answer to that question, but I'll ask anyway. And would you like to have the floor to present any new information or responses to any information?
Mr. Chairman, I'm here, but I don't see that Bob has logged on yet, which is odd because I was just on the phone with him 10 minutes ago.
He's not in yet.
I'm sure he will be joining momentarily.
Let me give him a nudge.
Yeah, I think I think that being said, I've seen some recent updates, just to sort of prime, I guess, the meeting this evening. I've seen some updates from Stantec responses, I should say, responses from the development team, response, answers from Stantec to those responses, as well as some additional butter comments that have come in of late. I do think we are nearing probably the end of the public hearing, but we'll see how tonight goes and sort of where we are with any open questions at the end of this evening. So.
And Bob is here. Sorry about that, Zach.
Okay, I was just wasting time with hot air. So now that you're here, we can begin if there's any new information, you have the floor to present any new information you have or any sort of updates or color you have. I just sort of ran folks through sort of the litany of what we've received since the last meeting. So, but with no real substantive content. So anyway, you have the floor if you want to present.
Sure, sure. So I guess what I would say, just to kind of do a quick recap. You know, we came back with the plan. Obviously, we got comments back. We made comments and then we got comment, you know, we've gone back and forth. And I think on in certain areas, we're down to some, some pretty, I don't say, I wouldn't say they're small issues, but few issues, right, that were kind of left discussing. And I'm sorry.
Everyone else could just go unmuted. Go ahead, Bob.
Sure. So, and you know, both I submitted to the board, even though it was really the Board of Health agent, Stantec, who sent a comment letter, because they're both engineers, they're actually fairly similar in, in style and the way they write their reviews. I kind of dealt with both of them in the same way. I tried to answer point by point as if for those folks who have had a chance to take a look. We found common ground on a huge number of issues over the last couple of weeks. And, you know, there were a couple of things that we can kind of discuss tonight that are, you know, what I would call open items. The other, and you know, I'd be happy to go through those. I sent you two separate emails, right? With comments on the remaining issues from both reviewers, both the Board of Health and in your own Tetra Tech. And I would suggest that we kind of go through those. You know, there are only a couple on each, and I think we probably should take the time to do that. The other thing I would report is that there are some conversations going on between myself and Paul and, and the Butters. And we're kind of working on throwing, you know, we had a robust couple of hours of conversation today. We're throwing around some ideas about how we can work together to, to make the project better for them and frankly, better for me. That's the goal, and I think we, we made some, some progress today. I will say that there is nothing in those conversations that will change the septic system at all. And so I think it's perfectly reasonable for us to kind of go through the issues relative to septic. What could change is the location of some buildings. And if we do that, obviously, we're going to have to regrade and come back to you with that plan. But I think frankly, if we do, it will be because we're in a, in some common ideas with folks. And I think that would be a real positive if, if it does happen. And like I said, I don't think it should slow us down tonight on more of the infrastructure issues, if you will. Does that make sense, Zach?
Does. Thank you. Question about relocation of the buildings is obviously only one place they can move. So I think I kind of know in general where they might go, which would be sort of maybe down slope to the left, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, it's
I guess my only question before I, before you answer is if there's a movement, movement, if you already have some concept of movement of the wells, which
No, the, the wells would not move.
And would the proximity to the traveled way remain the same?
I'm sorry, would the what to the traveled way?
Or proximity to the traveled way.
Well, so, so traveled ways, Zach, under the code is a road.
Driveway, I'm not trying to, let's, let's not be lawyer, like.
No, 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 I'm, I'm not being a lawyer.
I know. I'm just saying, I understand the regulation applies to a traveled way. This is a driveway, but I'm just asking, you know, my concern I expressed to you last time was just a close, the proximity to the driveway. And so both for salt and for potential hazards. And so I just wanted to know if in your, your, your initial concept, if the wells had any movement or if they are just in the same place as you designed them.
As of this moment, Zach, they're in the same place, but in some ways, that's awaiting kind of a resolution of this discussion about building locations for, for the obvious reasons. But I can, you know, to the extent that's a kind of a big deal to the board, I'm more than happy to move those wells further away from the common driveway. It's not a problem. That's
Yeah, I can tell you, right? That's just, that's a concern. That's a concern of mine.
Yep, yep.
Just given how much, you know, I, I've experienced the last week, you know, I'm a sensitive area and I'm trying to be sensitive to my well and the wetlands that I have down slope. And so, you know, I just think that, I think it's a concern for me. So.
I'm totally on board, working with you on that, on that issue. That's, that's an easy one, to be honest.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, anyway, so I don't want to continue to disrupt your flow, but you said it wasn't moving. So I wanted to see if you had a concept about the well.
Yeah, yeah. And like I said, once we, if, if we're able to come to a meeting of the minds about where buildings would be located, then I think that will then allow us to put the wells back down on the plan in a way that I'm sure we can, you know, make, make you all comfortable with that.
So you want to go through the septic updates or do you want to go through the, you know, different list? I don't know, sort of.
Yeah, why don't we go to both the, why don't we go to the whole review letter, not just septic? Cause there are other, some other topics. Do you want to start? Do you have a preference or does anyone have a preference, Stantec or? And if Jeannie could be kind enough to bring whichever one we want to talk about first up on the screen, that'd be great.
And Bob, just to confirm, do we have a stop, a stop at eight o'clock for you to hit the Board of Health meeting?
I, I think eight fifteen to eight thirty is what was working for them.
Okay, thanks.
So Jeannie, either the, my response, you know, the last letter, which I think was an email from, both of them were emails from me to Zach. One responding and including the issues that Stantec brought up. And then the other was the issues that Tetra Tech still had outstanding. And we can go to the whole letter if, if the entire comment letter of people want, but most of them are resolved and closed.
All right. Do you remember when you sent that?
Oh, it would have been yesterday, I think.
Yeah, I think Jeannie, the, the update on the screen. Oh, I see. No, okay. So maybe, maybe it's down in, in one of those separate areas, because there's response to Stantec, that's probably one of them.
Yeah.
Is it?
That's it. Yep.
Good work.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Tell me when you want me to stop.
So I did hear from Julie Dreyfus, Board of Health, and Julie identified number thirteen and number fifteen. And I don't think she's speaking for the whole board, don't want to say that, but in her email, she identified number thirteen and number fifteen as the two that, you know, she thought folks would want to focus on. And the first is with regard to the concept of a shared system. And a shared system is a, is a defined term in Title V and we are not a shared system under that defined term in Title V because we're a condominium. It, it very clearly, and I think the language, actually, I think it, it, it goes back in time. So I don't, I'm not showing you the exact language, but I believe that Stantec agreed with my answer, which was that we're not a shared system. And they have asked that we provide the condominium master deed and that we kind of have, not kind of, that we have an operations and maintenance plan that we give to the condominium association. And it's required by law that condominium associations carry reserves to pay for things like septic systems or roofs on their buildings or whatever. That's a requirement under mass law of a condominium association. This is exact, and so I've come back and kind of clarified and said, yep, we'll give you the master deed. We're going to create an operations and maintenance document. And, and the condominium association will by law have a reserve to take care of the system over time. And I will remind folks that this is exactly what we did when we built Abbey Road. It's, it's, it's the Title V rules go through a very kind of detailed regulatory thing that, you know, kind of is, is, is not what we did at Abbey Road. And it's not what we would do here. And frankly, I, Rick can comment on this, but I'm not aware that you know, the other forty Bs that have gone before us in town have done this either, but Rick can let us know about that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree 99% with, with Mr. Murchison. Definitely not a shared system because it's one owner, the owner being the condominium. And I think if you look at the decisions for 125 Coolidge, 59 North Main Street and the Fields of Sherborne, there's details in all of those on requirements for the O and M plan and the septic system and the contents of the master deed. So this is a, this is a path that has been well worn and we should just follow it again.
I agree with that, Rick.
Thank you for that color and historical knowledge, Rick. I appreciate it. And I think that makes a lot of sense.
So are we set on that topic or were there any?
The board has any questions? Obviously, let me know. I don't see any hands raised, but I think we can just keep moving on unless I hear or see an objection.
Okay, so we can move down to number fifteen. If, Jeannie, if you could just scroll up a little bit. Perfect. So what Stantec is saying is that well, they, they said earlier in the comment prior to this that this analysis is not required by Mass Title V or by local regulations for systems under 2,000 gallons. And we agreed with that. That was the, the back and forth that we had before. They have now come back and said, they say, you know, with this understanding of Sherborn's local concerns, should the board feel empowered? And then they talk about kind of what that would look like. They're not taking a position about whether the board should feel empowered or not. They've said that it's not required under state or local regulations. And it's our view that it's not required and our system is 1,320 gallons. And that's 33% below the 2,000 gallons, which triggers that analysis. And we don't believe it's appropriate for the town, either the Board of Health or the ZBA to ask us to do that. And that's, that's our position.
Thank you, Bob. Board members, any questions on, on that? Rick?
Yeah, it's not so much a question so much as a, a clarification. I think what Stantec is saying, of course, I know it worked for them, is that technically the, the scope of our concern might go past Title V and the local rules. If we thought something was dangerous, we could exercise our sto powers to say, well, wait a second, this is too dangerous. I think that's what they're saying is that's a possibility for us. I don't think they're trying to push us that way. I think they're simply acknowledging that that's a, a logical bin that, or a logical route that we could check, a branch that we could go down if we wanted to.
Yeah, I think, and in my mind, I look at our, maybe, you know, our deliberations and perspective on the Greenwood proposal. And I think that because we were on the very line of capacity, that gave us significant concern to ask, you know, to impose more conditions. I think this is distinctively different than that because of how sort of, because of the size of the delta in the, in, you know, the loading of the system versus the threshold. So.
Right. Like Stantec, I'm not arguing for a position. I'm just saying that, you know, it's, it's, it's the discussion point that's there.
No, I appreciate that. I think we do have a lever, if even if you're in the specs, we have concern, right? But I think in this case, I don't see any, anything in the gray zone here. I think we're, we're fairly, pretty much in the green, which ironically is in green lettering. So I guess that was brought in by you, Bob. So.
It was, so what, what do they call that suggestive or?
Yeah, you're very persuasive, Bob. Good work. So for now on, we know Bob's, all of Bob's comments will be in green. Anyway, so hey, it's, it's how I highlight at work, right? It's like red, red and green. I did it today, right before this meeting. So. So next topic, if there's no other questions from the board or the, or the public or any other representatives. Bob, I wouldn't wait. We have time crunch. So if we see something, we'll, we'll stop you and ask you to go back. But otherwise, it's like.
Okay, so Jeannie, do you want to bring up Tetra Tech at this point? Actually, what I'm looking for is my email response to Tetra Tech, because that focuses in on the issues that I think folks will agree are still kind of. It's an email from me.
Yep.
Would have been probably the 21st. In fact, definitely would have been the 21st.
So the same timeframe.
There it is. Tetra Tech response, Brush Hill Homes, January 20, or is that their letter?
That's there.
Or developer response right below it. There you go.
That's the standard.
Oh. Okay.
Let me bring it, hold on.
Jeannie, pull it out of your email.
Right.
That's, she thanks Sean.
You're welcome.
Is it the next one down? No, that's old.
While she's looking, think of other ways I could have said that.
Jeannie, why don't you stop sharing for a second until you find it? I think that's probably best. Bob, what date did you send it? I can't, I'm sorry.
Yesterday, it was, it would have gone to you as well, Zach, yesterday. Yesterday afternoon. I can look up exactly when I sent it.
Jeannie, I've got it here if you want me to share my screen. Jeannie, you sent it to all of us at four thirty-four yesterday. If that helps.
And I sent it at two forty-two to Zach and copied Jeannie, two forty-three.
That's the one.
Yep.
This is it here.
Yeah, thanks, Jeannie.
Thank you. Okay. So the first item relates to the roadway. And what they, I'm going to kind of put in simplified terms what they're saying to us. Tetra, and is Steve here tonight? I assume he is, right?
I am.
Yeah, great, great. So if I misspeak, Steve, please correct me. But I think what, what Steve is saying is, is that under subdivision rules in Sherburne and in other towns, and I think he maybe even said best practice, that we should be flattening the driveway out more at the, at the very end. And we certainly understand what he's saying. And we, our, our points are several. First, those regulations are really written for what we believe would be much larger groups of homes for kind of roads in a subdivision, as opposed to what is really a common driveway for four homes. And kind of more importantly, when, when Stantec originally commented, they wanted us to follow the natural grade as more than we did in the original design, and we went back and did that. And for those of us that aren't that technical on this stuff, the, if we follow the natural grade more like Tetra Tech asked us to do, we will end up needing less grading out on the sides of the road, if that makes sense to folks. So we can keep more of the existing vegetation and, you know, some of the nicer trees. If we don't have to grade all the way out, if you think about it, it's 19 feet, but if, to make it simple, it's a 20-foot driveway with 15 feet of, or it was, 15 feet on either side. If you have to grade all the way out 15 feet on both sides, that means we have to clear cut the entire 50-foot wide swath, which obviously we don't want to do. The neighbors don't want us to do that. It's, it's a, it's a bad idea. So the, the driveway that you see was us trying to really focus in on leaving as much of the vegetation as possible. And that kind of left us with a more natural grade, which, you know, is a little bit steeper than the regulations. We're not disputing what Steve's saying. We, you know, it's correct. But we're arguing that there are kind of different, there are different needs in play, so to speak. And we don't believe that it's a, you know, a, a dangerous situation by any means. And, you know, that it won't feel super steep. Those grades are not super steep. But so that's our, that, those are our comments and, you know, one of the things that we're in discussions about with the neighbors is the driveway and how, how much, how kind of much that's going to impact them. And so this is kind of an issue. We're willing to work with you all on this, but we don't think it's a good idea for everyone, for us to, you know, meet the, the. And again, this is, this is not a requirement under Title, excuse me, under Title V, under state law. This is a requirement that the board can, does have room to work with us on, to waive, right? It's, it's not a, it's, it's not something you have to uphold. And as of now, if, if it's not in that list of waivers, we're asking for a waiver from it.
Clarify my understanding. We're talking about a less than 4% grade.
Yeah, Steve, Steve, do you want to comment? I'd love for you to jump in and kind of tell me I, I'm stupid.
Yeah, so you're not stupid, Bob. The, so, so our comment really generally when you're, when you have a steep roadway coming into an intersection, you want to have what's called a level area. You know, the, the town has, the town subdivision regs limited at 3% for 75 feet prior to the intersection. That just helps cars if they're in a, you know, a nice heat situation, you know, if they're sliding down that driveway. It leaves some area to, to kind of slow out, slow down the car before entering the intersection. So really that, that was, and, and a lot of towns in the area do have, do have regulations like that. And really it's, it's best practice to, to be doing things like that in roadway design. So that's, that's really why we, we added the comment, because we did get the, the profile in this, this set of plans, which wasn't on, on previous sets. So that's why it's coming up at this point. But, you know, it's certainly, you know, a recommended safety improvement for the design.
So again, to the board, we're willing to work with you on this, but we think there are competing needs of other people beyond us here that.
Topographically, does this, I, I don't recall from, does this basically slope down, it slopes from the road?
Slopes down the entire, from Brush Hill all the way, all the way to.
So the cars coming up are facing uphill at a 6%, six and a half, almost 7% grade is what you're saying. When they're entering the road, it's almost 7% uphill. Yeah.
So, sorry. So where, where it's entering Brush Hill, there is a flat area proposed there at 2%. Actually, 2% and 3% coming into it. So that entering Brush Hill is fine. It's the, it's the hammerhead. It's coming down the hill at the hammerhead intersection at the bottom of the, like where, where the access is to the, to the units. That's where the, that's what the area I'm talking about. And there are, there are ways to do this without, you know, without offgrading, you know, we could have short walls there or, or something to, to get those grades in. You're not automatically predisposed to having to, to do offgrading to, to meet, meet those grades. So there are other options there. You know, it's certainly just a, it's a safety recommendation on our end.
And as a, as a practical matter, sorry, go ahead, Zach.
Go ahead, Bob.
I was just gonna say, as a practical matter, I will tell you that in the conversations we're having, this driveway may change a little bit. So you know, I, 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 I'm perfectly happy going on, having more of this conversation, but it might make sense to kind of table it for further information, I guess I would say, but it's up to the board, obviously.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. Bob, what's your, how are you constructing the road? What's the base, sub base going to be? What are your materials?
Now you're asking me technical questions. The engineer will be on the call in three minutes. And so if you want to.
I guess I, I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Piece of my own 1,100-foot adventure. So.
Sure, sure. Yeah. No, Kevin and Burke, I'm sure will be able to answer that in three minutes and.
Obviously, try to maintain, you know, the contours makes sense. Unless it's going to create a hazard for flooding or something on the roadway itself, which it doesn't sound like that's the case. So.
I mean, there might be a middle ground somewhere, Steve. I don't know if you feel that way, but you know.
But anyway, the, the details on the plan show, you know, a standard roadway box with, you know, compacted gravel base with four inches of asphalt. So that's, that's pretty standard.
Thank you, Steve.
So any other questions or comments from the board on this topic, as we know that this might change a little as we proceed?
Not for me. Thanks.
Great.
Okay, moving to, if you want to just scroll up, please, Jeannie. So we talked a little bit about this last time. We're not showing any stormwater at this, well, we are showing stormwater along the driveway, but we're not showing stormwater kind of at the, in the houses and, and that area. We are very willing to, to work with you all. You know, if we are at the point of going forward with the project, it's, we don't believe it's required, but we agree with Stantec that it would be, and sorry, Tetra Tech and Stantec. and, sorry, Tetra Tech and Stan Tech. I can't remember if Stan Tech mentioned it or not, but, but certainly Tetra Tech did. We are more than happy, and our suggestion would be, if we're kind of headed in that direction, that we get DGT folks to sit down with Steve and anybody else on his team, and we try and come up with a stormwater mitigation that is, makes sense for four single-family homes in this environment. We've got a lot of land that we're gonna, that we're gonna leave untouched downhill of us. So we've got a lot of places for the water to absorb and for, you know, potentially to do rain gardens. And I, I don't want to, you know, say what makes sense, because I have no idea, that's not my expertise. But we, we're very willing, if the board would like us to, to get together with Tetra Tech and kind of put some, some, you know, a, a, and a, a plan together, if you will.
Well, you know, I'll speak for myself, Bob, I don't see any showstoppers at the moment. So, I mean, I think we are moving towards, you know, an approval, but I can only speak for my own personal opinion, not the board's opinion at the moment.
True.
And I, you know, I think my, my asks would be, you know, move the wells so that they're in compliance with the local regs, if possible. It seems like you have enough space, so I don't think that's too big of an ask, and I think.
Yep, not a problem.
You know, the stormwater, also, I understand it's not required, but just given the amount of impervious space in the sensitive areas, I think, you know, something within reason, you know, given, given the sort of relatively low impact.
Yeah, yep. And again, I think getting someone representing you all, like Stan Tech, that clearly they know the business and DGT does as well. And I think you get professionals in the room and you come up with, you know, a sensible approach that everybody can be comfortable with. Fortunately, you know, we're not, we're, kind of downhill of us is all wildland and, you know, will be forever. You know, we have our own natural land, and then it's even more natural land beyond that. So it's not like, you know, we're worried about dumping water out on, on the street or something that will cause problems, so.
Exactly. I think it's more just what the water might contain, given the development, obviously. The channel, my inner conservationist, so.
Sure, yeah. I mean, obviously, the most obvious thing is ice melt. Yeah. Okay, so, and there were several other comments that kind of were in the same category, that all were in that same category. I, I think Steve's comments, other comments were more related to the driveway and a little bit on construction. And, you know, I think all of this, we're, we're willing to sit down and kind of, kind of work out those, those details. With regard to C1, we, they wanted a earthwork calculation. We have done the earthwork calculations and they're on the plan. The construction management plan will be provided, as is required by regulations, to the building inspector at the application for a building permit. That's standard, standard procedure. And obviously, you know, you can condition, condition us if you like, but we're required to do it even if you don't condition it. That's, that's just the, the law. The net, the recommended board included conditions that requires a board review of the construction management plan prior to construction. Yeah, I, I think Paul tells me that kind of administrative review of these things is within the board's purview with a, with an approval, yep. And that completes what I had to, you know, I just wanted to address the two engineers' reports. We, we felt like they were, you know, favorable reports for the project. Generally, they, as always, reviewers are gonna have, have things to say. And for the most part, we've agreed and/or complied. We have these couple of things that kind of are left outstanding, that we've, that we've identified tonight. And I think that's where we are.
Board members, any questions for the development team? Let's see anyone or hear anyone.
I, I don't have any, Zach, thanks. Zach, sorry, you couldn't see my hand, apparently.
Sorry, Rick, go ahead.
No, and, and, and it's minor. I, I noted in the, in the, in the reports and the back and forth, I think it was Stan Tech item 16 about wells to bedrock. And if I recall your position last time, I imagine it, it still is, that, that you don't think that's appropriate or, or fair here.
Yeah, I mean, I, you're, you're right, Rick. It's, and I didn't, Ray, I didn't, you know, hide it. I, Julie didn't mention it as kind of a, a remaining item for them. Perhaps it is, and she just didn't mention it, obviously. But I, what, what the topic is, is are we, as I recall, it had to do with the fractures, Rick, in the, and would we do testing to determine the, I don't know what the term, is the term friability? Or, or the, kind of how easily it breaks up, I think, I don't know what the term.
Yeah, friability tends to be more asbestos, but I think it tends to be from the fields of Sherburne and, and similar ones.
Exactly, yeah.
Sort of like where, where the cracks are in the granite here, and which way they run. And, you know, what's the odds of a crack running the, in inconvenient direction?
Sure.
And Zach, I'm not, I'm not lobbying for us to take a position on that. I just think we're gonna be intentional about whether we do, do or don't.
Yep.
I, no, I appreciate you raising the issue.
And our, our position, just to restate it, was that it's not in the local or state regulations and other market rate developments have not been asked to do this, and so therefore, we think it's inappropriate.
And my understanding is the test, and this was, this was the test above the septic system, that's correct?
I'm not sure where it was supposed to be, I, I don't know.
It was to test the risk of septic, as well as bleaching, but I thought that you had said that.
There's no, there's no ledge, I mean, we, you, by, by law, we have to dig down and make sure there's no ledge below the septic systems.
Well, there, there, there's ledge everywhere in Sherburne, it's a matter of how far down it is.
Bedrock is what I would call that, Rick, yes.
And, and, and the question is whether it's fair, reasonable, and enforceable for us to try to make them do that drilling for this size system under these circumstances.
Agreed.
Agreed with that characterization, yeah. And I would say, my opinion, I'll offer it, which no one asked for, which is that, no, it is not. Given the size of the system, that's my perspective. Again, if we were closer to the 2,000 gallon per day limit, I think that might be something I would consider. But we are, we are not there, so I, that's, that's my perspective. But I see Rick sort of nodding, but I'll let him speak for himself.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't go past it without discussing it.
No, appreciate it. Todd or Jonathan, any perspective or comment here?
I'm, I'm in agreement with your comments on the topic.
I see Attorney, oh, thank you, Jonathan. I see Attorney Hill's hand is raised.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Dan Hill. I'm an attorney representing the directed butters to the project. And I just, just want to comment briefly on this topic of, of testing for water quality impacts. As you know, we've raised this issue and we've really focused on this issue with our recent comment letters from Scott Horsley and myself last week and the week before. And I, I do want to first start out by saying that Mr. Murchison is correct. We are meeting with Mr. Murchison. We are in talks about the, the project and some tweaking and some potential changes that my clients might feel more comfortable with than what's currently proposed. And, and those talks are ongoing, but nothing's been signed yet. So I, I do want to share our concern with this issue is that even though this is a smaller project and the flow is under 2,000 gallons per day, that isn't actually the issue. The issue could, could, there could be an impact to my client's wells if the area of impact from this leaching field goes towards their wells. You could still have significant exceedances of nitrogen in the wells, even though the flow is only, you know, four houses worth of, of flow. I've got a project in Stowe that I'm working on where, where you have two units of housing. And the modeling that we did showed impacts three times the level of, of nitrogen in, in the butters wells than what is allowed under the, under the state drinking water standards. So it's not so much the fact that you only have four houses. What is really important to understand is what direction is the groundwater moving in the fractured bedrock? And that's an unfortunate situation, because we don't, in other towns where the, the wastewater is recharged into an overburdened aquifer, it's much easier to predict and you can do modeling. Here, it's much more difficult, but the, the concern is no less. And, and I just want to urge the board to really consider the, the consequences here. If this project gets built and, and the wastewater does go into fractures that do head in the direction of abutting wells. Or for that matter, the project's own wells, I mean, that, that, that is also a public health concern. And the fact is, is that, if you waive the local board of health regulations, that, that you're losing an opportunity to, to do additional monitoring and testing that might protect the abutting wells. And so we have stated repeatedly that you have the ability, and I think actually, Rick, I think you invoked Stowe, if I'm correct, and you're, you're probably invoking my case, the Reynolds case, where that, you know, that the courts have affirmed that, that public health trumps 40B. And, and if there is a cause for concern, local bylaws need not, and frankly, should not be waived. The local bylaw here at issue, or the regulation, is the board of health's environmental impact statement. I know there's been concern that that's not legal, but I, I don't agree with that interpretation respectfully. It, it's a regulation that until, until it's declared illegal is in effect. And there's a presumption that municipal bylaws and regulations are valid. So our position is that there should be testing for this site. We don't have any information to date on groundwater flow directions, where the water goes once it gets into the fractured bedrock. That, that to us is incomplete, it's an incomplete record. And in our view, the board should not close the hearing until it has that level of detail. And I'm not going to repeat what I said in my letter, but if you go back to my letter from January 2nd, we laid out six things that we think the applicant should be doing to establish some baseline information and data as, on this issue of groundwater. So with that, I'll close and thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Attorney Hill. Quickly, question for you, you know, is there a standard that you're aware of that we are testing against? Or is this a, you know, sort of, if this testing is that, my understanding is the bedrock fractures in all sorts of unpredictable ways. So short of peeling back every ounce of soil, how are we ever going to really know, I guess? And I'm just, I'm pressure testing this idea of testing the fractures, because everything I understand is it's a regular, it's unpredictable. And so how effective is this testing? Do we have any, any indicia that this test is going to actually provide, you know, validly actionable information or just another dispute between experts? I guess is my question, right? Like, if the crack points north, is it going north or does it, could actually mean going east, right? Like, it's just, it's the eye of the beholder. So I need to understand a little bit more about the testing that you're advocating for.
Yeah, so this is a really issue of, of geology, and, and I'm not a subject matter expert, to say the least. This issue did come up in the fields of Sherburne. I believe that the board, and Rick may recall, we, I think the board did hire a hydrogeologist, if not a geologist, I believe it was Novus, that was, that did provide advice and opinions as to the, the direction of the fractures. So it is possible to do some field work to establish the direction of fractures that are in the bedrock on the site that could narrow perhaps the, the, or, or, you're never going to get certainty, but you could get to a better place of, of comfort knowing where the fractures are and what directions they're heading. So that, that is, that is what we would be seeking, is that there'd be a, a geologist or hydrogeologist brought in to evaluate this project and this application, to give the board some information and, and guidance as to how it can get more comfortable, you know, with this issue. I don't, I can't hear today tell you how, what test, what the scope of the testing is and what the protocols are. But this has, this has been done, it's been done in Sherburne, it was done in Carlisle for another 40B project that I worked on about six or seven years ago.
Yeah, Rick, I would ask you, you know, can you think of a hypothetical? I know we're not in a deliberation phase yet, but I'm trying to think of how you craft a condition here, because it seems to me that there's a standard you have to tie the condition to, and I'm not really sure what that standard is and what the level of opinion is. So, you know, short of holding up the public hearing for this, I'm just, I don't know, you know, there's even a possibility of, of an effective enforceable condition here, because I don't know what we're trying to benchmark against.
So Zach, I'm, I'm glad to hear from both you and Dan that no matter what goes wrong here, it's going to be my fault.
Yes, absolutely. That's why you're the associate member now, you've known.
Okay, designated Javelin catcher, as they say. My recollection mirrors Dan's on the fields at Sherburne. It was Novus, it was Jim Vernon up there. And because that was a, remember, that was a much larger project, 32 units, down in the wetlands, down there at, down by, down by the Route 16 at Holliston. And the concern was, you know, where was the septic flow from all of those units going to go? And I think Novus did some, I know, I know they did some desktop analysis that was very helpful on sort of striations in, in the rock. I think they might have done a little digging too, but at the end of the day, it is, it is all educated guess work. I think if Jim Vernon were on the, on the call with us, he'd say, he'd say that. His educated guesses being much better than everybody else's, however. And so I think the question for our board is, is that fair, wise, cost-effective for a project at this scale?
Yeah, I mean, I understand, I do understand the value of, of it. I think to your point, you know, given, given all the other indicia, I, you know, I don't, it, it seems like it's a nice to have and not a need to have, but that's my personal opinion. I want to turn it over to the board to see if that's how they feel. You know, I understand rock moves and rock can, you know, fracture in mysterious ways, but in theory, this property is downhill from the abutters, from what I can see. And it's, would stand the logic that the water is flowing away from the abutters and towards this project, but that's just my uneducated guess. So, board members, other, you know, unless, Rick, you have any additional comments.
I think Mr. Haverty is going to correct all the 10 things I got wrong.
Probably something I got wrong too, so.
I, I am in fact not going to correct anything that anybody got wrong. I am just going to point out that there, there was a, a higher level of review in the fields of Sherburne. You did bring in Novus and Dr. Vernon, but that never resulted in any sort of definitive result. And it wound up, you know, with the board of health denying the Title V, we took an appeal to the land court and the land court overturned the board of health's determination. The issue of, of the fractures remained an issue unresolved during the board of health, I'm sorry, during the land court process. And I, I don't see how, particularly on a project of this small scale, how it's going to get you any information that's going to provide any additional certainty and how it's, it, it all possible for it to be a cost-effective thing for my client to do.
Thanks, Paul, I appreciate your perspective. I see Jonathan nodding and Todd smiling, so.
Yeah, well. I think what Paul said makes sense.
Thank you, Jonathan. Todd?
Yeah, I, I, I agree, given the level of uncertainty in terms of results and any resulting confidence that it may give us in one direction or the other. I find it difficult to justify imposing this on the applicant.
And my understanding is that, you know, we, our, our sort of authority to impose conditions, you know, this is Paul, Paul and Rick will correct me on this. Our authority to sort of impose conditions are to help to make the project basically work and, and not to block it. And so I guess, to Paul's points, I, I don't know if there's a condition that I could impose with a standard that would sort of make or break the project with, on this issue. And that's sort of my perspective, but Rick, I see your hand. And that's sort of my perspective, but Rick, I see your hand is raised and then I'll go to Michael.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with my fellow board members. I just want to make sure we don't throw too much of the science under the bus here. This is not pure guesswork. You know, those cracks in the rock were put there three hundred and fifty million years ago. And they're there and they're not moving around. It's just hard to know where they go without digging up everything. And so I think it's not cost-effective here for this project, but I don't want the record to show a sense that this is junk science or not, not worth looking into.
No, I agree with you. I, I, I want to underscore that point. I think that my perspective on uneducated is that when you're dealing with a larger scale project, there's just more impactful flow to measure and guess where some of those molecules of dirty water will go. When you're dealing with a smaller scale project, it's very difficult to see sort of potentially how it's going to disperse. There may be circumstances where that's easier to determine and concentrate. But obviously a larger project presents larger risk and sort of easier sort of measurable impacts. At least theoretically. Michael.
Michael Lesser, fifty-four Forest Street, just speaking as an individual. I'll first say, right, at the fields at Sherburne, there turned out some concrete indications about what the nitrogen levels would be at some of the wellheads at the time that exceeded the normal standards for, for sensitive receptors. In the end, they actually went to a public water supply and removed all of those individual wells at that time. But, but I can see where you're going in terms of the scale of this project. But yes, I agree with what Rick just last said about the fact that there are possibilities of getting some real useful information from this kind of work. But shy of advocating that, I would just say whether you might consider for the protection of health of the people there or the neighbors, whether you require that the residents there know that they have to do testing to see over time whether there is some sort of sort of flow that might interfere, that might lower the quality of the wells. And whether that's something that's even whether you can require it or, or something like that or for the neighbors. It's always hard to attribute whether you get a baseline for the neighbors and then you can see whether this future testing now as to what the outcome would be and what you do then, it's just a matter of at least people will be aware of that there may be is a problem. I don't think it does anything for approving this project other than to make sure people do monitor what's going on. And not let this thing go on, left on a, left not being that aware of it, let's put it that way. Sorry about that in articulation.
No problem, Michael. I, I agree, and I just want to also point out, I also think it's always a good idea for neighbors to test their wells as a baseline before new wells go in because as my neighbor reminded me who first introduced me to Rick to join the zoning board, who shall not be named, when I put my well in and messed up his well for about six months and then it cleared up. But if you're so bothered by a little bit of disruption and discoloration, that you should definitely get it tested before, you know, a neighbor's wall goes in and you have a baseline, so. I see Bob nodding, so I always, I always appreciate when Bob agrees with me.
Yeah, I. May I comment? I just, I, what I want to say to Michael and to everyone here tonight is that I have advocated for many, many years in front of the Board of Health for there to be a requirement that I kind of advocated two different regulations. The less onerous regulation was that there be a requirement that wells be tested at the point of the sale of the home, similar to a Title V inspection. And not that there be any kind of standards in put in place that the house can't be sold, but rather that the water be tested and the results be given to the buyer. I've advocated for many, many years for that for the Board of Health. I frankly would even be in favor of that all homes in Sherburne are required to test their water every five years or so. I'd be in favor of that public policy. I'm sounding like a broken record, but I'm not in favor of a public policy that puts that requirement on an affordable housing project that it doesn't put on all of the rest of us. And so I just want to go on record saying I am in favor of testing. I have told the people at Abbey Road to test, 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 which they do. And I will tell the people if and when Brush Hill is built to test their well. So I agree with Michael on testing. I don't agree with differentiating it between market rate homes and affordable homes.
I, I agree with you, Bob, and I appreciate your perspective. I, I agree with your advocacy on those two points. I think Andrew's hand was raised a moment ago, but I don't see it now, but I don't know if he's.
Yeah. You know, listening to all of you, I'm a little distressed that every member of the zoning board of appeals that spoke on this issue prefaced their remarks by saying, I'm not an expert in groundwater or hydro, or hydrogeology or anything else, but I'm going to make, I'm going to render an opinion as to whether certain risks are reasonable or the data will even address that. We don't know, we're not, we're not experts in this field. And I think it would behoove all of us to at least get some counsel from a hydrogeologist who can tell you how accurate some of their analysis would be as to the direction of the groundwater. But we're, right now, we're just all stabbing in the dark.
I, Andrew, I agree with your perspective. Unfortunately, there's an intersection of science and law that we are dealing with. And I think that is where I think maybe where you feel that we may be too callous is actually sort of balancing what our actual authority is and enforceability, our ability to create enforceable conditions. So I'm not trying to advocate for Bob, but that's my understanding of what I can do. And I think, you know, Rick, I don't know if you have a perspective, but that's, that's how I view it.
Andrew, I'm sorry, but I would state it a little more starkly, which is that it is our job to make the judgments we're making. And, you know, I don't think we are being disrespectful of science by saying we're not expert, but a lot of us have been around this mulberry bush a lot of times and know a fair amount about it. And the board is required to rule on these things and not just send every single possible issue out to every possible expert. If you feel. And you're entitled to disagree with that, I hear you. No, if you feel you got the confidence to make those, those calls, I understand. But what I was hearing is I'm not, I'm not an expert in hydrogeology. But, you know, I really question whether or not the, the test results would tell us one way or another, the direction of the groundwater.
Well, this is four units.
So you're willing to say that with four units, that there wouldn't be any, any groundwater that could be traveling outside of that area or maybe.
No, no, nobody can guarantee anything. A new house was put up across the street from me a couple of years ago. It could be that there's a crack in the bedrock that goes directly to my well. I don't know. I mean, I tested, I, I, I agree with Bob Merchison on everybody should always test their well, so they have a baseline. But we can't always prohibit everything because something might happen. We have to go with what's likely to happen. And particularly where, where as a board, we have the affordable housing handcuffs on us. And we are supposed to approve these projects unless there is good reason not to do so. That is the mandate. I don't like it, but that is the mandate to us.
Mr. Chairman, could I just chime in?
Sure, Dan.
So, I mean, Rick, I agree with you, except no one here is suggesting that the board deny the project. I, I think what we're suggesting is that additional study is justified. And, and that's what we advocated at the fields. And that's what I advocate in a lot of projects where you have unique circumstances, where you have private septic and private wells on the same site. There's a reason why Sherburne has strict health regulations and strict zoning regulations. It's because you don't have public water and you don't have public sewer. So these are unique circumstances. And to your point, which you just made, Rick, you kind of made my point is that we don't know if there's a fracture in the bedrock that goes directly from this leaching field to Andy's well or Dennis's well. And we don't, but we could do more study and research to see if that's likely. And that's what we did in fields. There was fractured trace analysis, I believe. I believe we looked at the ledge outcrops in the area. I think Jim Vernon was able to make some predictions as to where these fractures are likely headed based upon what he could tell from aerial photography. So there are sources of things to do to sort of narrow the uncertainties. And I'm saying that wrong, but you know what I'm trying to get is that there's ways to get to more of a comfort level than just simply, as Andy said, washing, wiping your hands, saying, I don't know enough about this, so I'm just going to make a judgment, it's only four units.
Well, personally, I, while I agree with almost everything you said, I object in the strongest possible terms to accusation that this board is just wiping its hands and not dealing with an important issue. I think, I think the fair point that you get to make and that Andrew gets to make is in your judgment, you think this is cost-effective for the scale of this project. And I hear you on that argument. I do not think it is necessarily compelling to the board and the board members get to make that decision.
Yeah, I mean, I, thank you, Rick, and, and thank you Attorney Hill, and thank you, Andrew. You know, look, I, this is not, I put myself in your shoes and I, I would not, you know, necessarily be happy about a development right next to me. I enjoy my, the open space that's, you know, in the Sherburne Rural Land Foundation. Bob, I think tried to build on it at some point in the past. I think that there's, I'm not seeing any indicia of probable concern. And I'm speaking a little bit too much of a lawyer here, but like this is, this is sort of where we are. I think, you know, we didn't hit ledge or bedrock when there was testing. I think that there's a question of whether this regulation is, is, you know, is legal. You know, I think that, you know, we're not, we're definitely not washing our hands, but I think there's a, you know, there's a balancing of, of a lot of things. And, you know, given the facts and the size of the system, I think, you know, that's sort of where, where it's cutting right now. And, you know, I don't mean to dismiss your perspective in, in it all and suggest it's not meaningful, but unfortunately I just, I think we are, you know, our, our hands are somewhat tied into how much discretion we have. And, you know, I, I don't want to, I, I'm concerned about trying to create an enforceable condition that's overburdening the project. So that, that's really where, where I'm at. I'm going to stop talking now and before I dig myself a bigger hole. I see a hand is raised, Ms. Gebby? You're still on mute.
Okay. If there's a problem with the water, it affects the abutters possibly? And who's protecting the four homes that are going to be built there? In terms of, you're going to tell these people to go in and they should test their water to make sure there's not some co-mingling between the septic and the wells? I'm sorry, I just think that this just feels like we're just going, okay, let it happen without, without a thorough investigation of the water and where, where there could be a problem with it. Who's going to fix it if it, if there is?
So that's part of, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, and I, you know, is that, is that Bob Merchison that's going to fix it? Probably not. These people will independently have to take care of themselves. And, you know, again, this is, the role of the committee is to protect not only their mission, which is to probably get these things approved, but they also have to protect the citizens, that's all.
Thank you, we appreciate your feedback. I think that there's only so much authority we have to protect the public, given the, you know, evidence before us. I think as, as other, as others in Sherburne have, you know, there's a, there's a a regulation on the books around removal of bedrock and testing of wells for a similar reason. It's obviously not, you know, it's not a slam dunk, but you know, if you test your well before the project goes in and two years later, there's all sorts of bad things happening, I think there's a pretty strong correlation. You know, that there's a, there's some responsibility and maybe some bad engineering and, and that would be the responsibility potentially of malpractice carriers for the engineers, the lawyers. If it's, if it's, you know, close enough in time, who knows, it could be the property itself. So again, I think information is what gives you the ability to determine who's at fault. And that's why I think Bob and others have advocated for testing wells regularly, so you have a baseline, so you can monitor what's going on. Agree, we have to protect the residents in town. We also have an obligation, as Rick said, to approve these projects absent a strong indicia of harm. And so I think that's again, what we're balancing here, so. Michael Lesser.
I just wanted to point out that it's eight oh five, I don't know how long Bob will stay here. I, whether Michael Lesser is speaking as a conservation commissioner, whether a few of the points in my belated memo that went out today could be discussed while Bob is still here. So I'm not quite sure of your scheduled hearings.
I have not read it yet, Michael, so, and I think that we're going to have, I think Mr. Haverty and Mr. Merchison might be generous enough to give us yet one more meeting for the, for the hearing. So I see a nod. So Bob, I don't know if you want to sort of wrap this up or if you want to address the Conservation Commission comments that were submitted late today at the next meeting, which might be our last, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I, for my part, I can address them quickly because honestly, it's a videotape of what I've said at a number of these hearings. And that is that Michael has raised some legitimate points when, if and when we're granted a special permit, will go before the Conservation Commission under the Wetlands Protection Act only. And the Conservation Commission will have the opportunity to regulate us under the Wetlands Protection Act. All we're doing frankly is some fairly minor grading in the outer buffer zone. But, and Michael brings up several other kind of regulatory asks that he's making a view to ask on me. And frankly, they, in, in one case, he sends you a draft regulation. Well, you know what I'm going to say about my being subject to a draft regulation. I feel like I should be subject to no more than the local regulations. And in some cases, I'll ask for waivers from those. But Michael in his, in his email today was asking us to, to comply with a draft regulation that nobody else is required to comply with in town at this point. So my answer to that is categorically no. And, you know, there was another one, which is, and, and again, we, Michael and I have had this conversation about the sealant on the, on the asphalt. I am more than willing to consider complying with what he's asking. But I object to being regulated into doing something that I don't have to do when I build on Greenwood Street or I build on Washington Street or I build on anywhere else. I, I want to be regulated in a proper manner under the law, not under drafts or kind of want, want to be regulations. And those are my comments on that topic.
Thank you, Bob. Rick?
I, I think there may be an easier way through this thicket without having to deal with the effectiveness of draft regulations or whether they're being applied unequally. Almost all the topics raised in Michael's email, which I only looked at briefly, so I may not have gotten it perfectly, are subjects of prior conditions and prior 40B decisions. You know, quality of fill, what can be done where? And it seems to me it's likely that there is a middle path through that, that Bob will be able to live with as, oh, those are reasonable conditions as opposed to, wait, there's a new regulation which applies and is special to him.
So Rick, there was one, Rick, in Michael's email that requires the applicant to do quality testing on the fill in the buffer zone. And I am willing to live by that.
And, and I think for, for some of the other projects and Dan or Paul, who may know those decisions better than I, better than I can recall them, there were fill testing requirements, maybe that maybe was being tested before it came on. But, but there was, there was fill quality control.
still testing requirements, maybe that maybe it was being tested before it came on, but but there was there was still quality control that the developers found acceptable because it was it was common for all sorts of projects in Sherburne.
In the buffer zone. That's that's correct.
I I, you know, I don't recall that the each decision with enough perfection to to know exactly what where what was being used.
Michael and then Andrew.
Yeah, I I would say, let's say, let's just focus on the fill. I didn't propose that you had to do a draft regulation. I'm proposing to the ZBA that in your capacity of that I, well, Bob has accepted the idea of meeting the regulation for fill in the buffer zone. But there's a tremendous amount of fill going into the site. And there is unfortunately a gap in our local regulations about the quality of that fill. And so therefore, what I'm trying to argue is that you as the ZBA as a public health issue, given the quantity of fill there, that there should be something about this quality of fill for the whole entire site. And that I propose to you as sort of like a citizen for you to consider. And these are examples of kind of regulations of the kind of conditioning that you can do. That the draft one is more extensive, but it's based on talking with people in the field. And it's something that you can do. It's not a matter of it's it's because there's a lot of fill. And and it's it is a health concern when you have that much filled to make sure that it's the certain levels of contamination are not there. And so I think it's not a matter of market or not market. These are issues that should be addressed when there's a lot of fill being moved onto a site. And so therefore, I put them forward for you to consider as just a ZBA doing its job on health issues. And some of the other stuff on the cold tar sealants. Yes, those are issues that you would have to do, but that stuff we have done on in cases where and Conservation Commission can do it. We can't do it in this case where some of the driveway or road is in our jurisdiction. These are very toxic chemicals. And so from a public health point of view, I think that you can also take on that task for asphalted areas that are outside of, let's say, what we can do. And you can do it under the hubric of of public health. So I think it's something that that I think there is, as Rick said, a middle ground that that I think some of this stuff, the cold tar has been accepted at other points by others and that the fill stuff, maybe the applicant can come forward with some set of testing that they're willing to do, but something that does protect the health of the of the area from the from possibly contaminated fill. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Andrew.
Yeah, thanks, Zach. That there are two areas of concern with this project. Geographic areas of concern. One is the five acre parcel behind our house. And and the second one is the access driveway leading from Brush Hill Road running alongside the Natal's property and ours. A distance of more than of the the length of a football field. It's like four hundred linear feet. It's an enormous distance to have a roadway right next to your house or your property. On January seventeenth, I wrote a letter to the ZBA inviting all of you to come out and take a look at at that from our perspective. Our our land and also the Natal's land next door. I haven't gotten a response on that. And I also requested that Dennis Natal and I give a very short PowerPoint presentation on that and haven't heard anything. We therefore, we're not prepared for it today, but we're running out of time anyway. So just wanted to know whether anybody's coming by, how much coffee we coffee we should make. And also whether we could indulge you with just a a short PowerPoint presentation at the next hearing, one or the other or both. And you know, it's it, I'm not telling tales out of school, but we are engaged in discussions with with Bob and his team. And this is one of the areas that we're we're working on quite vigilantly. So I just wanted to raise that. But anyway, I appreciate if you could get back to me as to a response on that January seventeenth letter.
Yeah, no, I I apologize if I provide your writing, not to be rude or try to you, but I I should see my inbox. So I so I guess two things. One is I I personally am not inclined to come back out. I'm happy to look at photos. It's not a lot of lack of desire. It's a lack of time and capacity at the moment. I'm just, you know, that that's sort of where I'm at. I can try to swing by. You know, in some free time this week, I just don't know when when that's going to be. So if you want to send me your phone number, I'm I'm happy to maybe try to swing by this weekend. It may it may have some kids in tow. But I think ultimately, I'll tell you, I think that, you know, the concerns that you have are you know, not within our power to sort of condition. I think that that's your your the dissatisfaction of the proximity is not something that's going to be a showstopper for this project. Nor is it really something that I think we have the the capacity to condition. And so I again, I appreciate your concern, but you know, I think unfortunately, we are dealing with a law that I don't agree with either, but it is what it is. I don't have I don't have the ability to sort of address many of your concerns. I'm just going to be blunt with you. So that's my perspective, and I I think Rick is raising his hand, but.
Yeah, Zach, maybe maybe you could, maybe you could, once you get information with Mr. Lauterback on on time, maybe you could circulate that to board members and board members could individually go if they wished. I I don't think, Andrew, that we should go en masse because of the 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 open meeting and and discussions outside of a meeting issues, but you know, I'm I'm open to considering it. And but I'm only speaking for myself and but I I I echo Zach's caution to you. I'm not sure it'll change anything, but it might be useful to look. Andrew.
Okay, I have no, thank you both. I have no problem telling you right now what my phone number is if you want to write it down. It is six one seven two eight five two eight nine eight.
I will, I'll try to come out the next week or so.
Right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And 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 Zach, in terms of this PowerPoint proposal, yeah, that should be on our agenda next time.
Yeah, I think we have, we're going to talk about the next meeting tonight and hopefully a few moments. And so with unless there's any other comments, I'm going to ask Bob and the development team before he goes to his next enjoyable meeting, where what time we would like to meet next.
Well, so Zach, I believe, and Paul can correct me, or you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we have extended you until Thursday, February sixth. I would like to complete this by that date. I think we've done a lot of talking about this. If folks feel like we need to meet twice, you know, by February sixth, I'm happy to take the time to to meet with you all twice. And, you know, if that's if that's important. As I said, you know, these conversations with Andy and Dennison folks and Michelle and so we may make some changes. If we do, we'll get them out to you as quickly as we possibly can. And, you know, we we'll send them to Steve and his folks and they can review it. I don't think there's you know, that I don't think there's anything in the movement of the structures. If anything, it's going to reduce the amount of pavement involved in the overall project, which I think is good for for all of us, frankly. It puts potentially puts the houses a little closer together, which is not quite optimal for me, but there are other benefits. And certainly there are benefits potentially to the neighbors if they're agreeable. So but we'll we'll turn that around as quickly as we possibly can. And if you want to schedule one meeting and then we can see if we need another one, I'll, you know, it's your call, Zach, but I'm.
Obviously, I don't want to, I don't want to have a predetermined outcome, but I think let's let's plan for the sixth. I think we are getting close to the end here unless there's a major material change, which of course could happen. So let's just see, let's see what happens.
Unfortunately, I can't meet on the sixth because of a health issue thing with relatives. But the fourth and the fifth would be okay or the third for that matter.
That week is fine, so.
Actually, not not the fourth, third or the fifth, I guess. Yeah, sorry.
You saying the third?
Third or the fifth.
Monday, the third or the fifth. Either one.
Like on the fifth.
You do. So is the third good for the board? Is that looking okay? Monday, the third at seven?
I think that, yeah, the third works for me. I think that makes the most sense as well. It gives us a little extra time in case something were to occur and we weren't able to meet on the fifth, being so close to the sixth.
Yeah.
Okay, so do I have a motion for continuance of this hearing?
Mr. Chair, I I move that we continue the hearing for Brush Hill Road to Monday night, February third, twenty twenty five at seven PM.
Seconded.
Wonderful. Vote by roll, Mr. Fitch.
Aye.
Mr. Labby.
Labby, aye.
So Novak.
It's a fabulous vote motion, so I vote in favor of it.
Wonderful. McBride, aye. We will continue until the third. Right, that's what we just said.
Yes.
At seven PM. And Andrew, if you do have a presentation, that would be the evening to do it. And do I have a motion to adjourn unless there's any other matters?
So moved.
Seconded.
Vote by roll, Mr. Fitch.
Fitch, aye.
Mr. Novak.
Novak, aye.
Mr. Labby.
Labby, aye.
Mr. McBride, aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Stay warm.